Welcome to your City Commission Study Session. Today is Tuesday, October 20th, 2020. Please turn off or silence all cell phones during the meeting. Meetings are televised every day on Channel 2 at 7:00 PM at midnight and available for viewing on YouTube and Facebook Live. Leavenworth City Commission Study Session will be open to the public with limited seating capacity. To reserve a seat, email C. Williamson at firstcity.org, no later than 4:00 PM on October 20th. Seats will be available on a first-come, first-served basis. To mitigate the spread of COVID-19, face coverings and social distancing are required to attend the meeting in accordance with Kansas Open Meetings Act. The meeting can be viewed on Channel 2 and via Facebook Live. Public is encouraged to continue to view the meeting via Facebook Live or Channel 2 and to submit questions on agenda items to be read during discussion on that topic. Submit your comments or questions to C. Williamson at firstcity.org, no later than 6:00 PM on October 20th. For call-in options related to commenting on agenda items, submit your inquiry to C. Williamson at firstcity.org. We have five subjects, topics for this study session this evening, and the first one is going to be to review the 2020 Municipal Court Mental Health Diversion Program. And Mr. Kramer?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, our chief, our police chief, Pat Kitchens, will start off on this item, and I'll let him introduce both the topic and our guest tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, I'm pleased to be joined tonight by our city prosecutor, Catalina Thompson, and the supervisor of the probation, city probation, Robin McDowell, to introduce to you a new program that will be offered moving forward, Mental Health Diversion Program through municipal court. I think everybody who has been in elected position over the last couple of years have heard me talk about the struggles and issues of mental health. Mayor Griswold and I, Mr. Kramer and I, sat on the Mental Health Task Force for several years, working on infrastructure, trying to solve that problem. But we continue to deal with issues regarding mental health as a public safety issue. For example, last year, the Leavenworth Police Department responded to 166 mental health calls. We dug deeper into those numbers and can tell you that in some of those instances, 19, for example, were repeat problem that we continue to deal with the same people. Very often, those people are committing very minor criminal offenses that take place, such as disorderly conduct or criminal trespassing. We get called from the public to sort of deal with it. We all recognize that the issue in that regard is probably an underlying issue of mental illness in some capacity, but given what takes place, we are, in some instances, compelled to take action in the form of a citation or perhaps an arrest. And then what happens after that is it sort of falls through the crack and becomes a repeat cycle. I'm very excited to have Catalina on board. She has hit the ground running regarding the issue of mental health, and her and Robin together put this program together so that, once those folks enter the system principally by the police department, there is an infrastructure that exists behind that that perhaps we can offer some assistance with them so that we can get them out of the system and back on track, functioning back in society. And so from that perspective, that's our sort of opening line. I'll turn it over to Catalina now, and she can talk in depth about specifically how the program came to pass.
Thank you, Chief.
All right, thank you.
Welcome to the City Commission Study Session, Ms. Thompson. It's good to see you.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Commissioners, for having me here today. I'd especially like to thank Pat Kitchens, Taylor, Paul, Debbie, our clerk. I've been working closely with Keith Rickert at the Guidance Center, Stacy Downey with the Veterans Affairs Administration, but most of all, I'd like to thank Robin McDowell. She's really spearheaded this, pushed it, and been working on this for, I'd say, several years now, all the way back to us going out to Wichita, who had one of the first mental health courts, and we got to see that in action. And to this point now where we're bringing this program to you, we're really excited about it. We really do think that this could mean a lot for our community. Mental health affects approximately 20% of our population. It crosses socioeconomic, race, gender, and age boundaries. And it's important when they get to the situation of being in the criminal justice system that we're able to provide them with services and help so we can prevent, you know, future crimes and recidivism. So, as Chief said, you know, the police are the first contact quite often with criminal trespass, disorderly, and another plethora of petty crimes. And our hope is that we can provide the mental health services that these people need and also make our community safer. So, some of the services in talking with the Guidance Center and with the Veterans Affairs is that they can provide case management, they can provide therapy, medication management, proper diagnosis and treatment, and they can, you know, work with the offenders during this time that they'll be on diversion. We're looking at them being on diversion in most cases for one year, and during that year, they'll be seeking these services. The Guidance Center has some great services available, and the VA also has some great services and, in fact, has some additional inpatient services available. So, and the cheering on top of all of this is that we can provide this without going outside our current budget. So, we're very excited about that. In talking with Robin, they do believe that they have staff sufficient at this point that will be able to manage it. A lot of the work is going to come through the VA and the Guidance Center. They are going to be providing us with a monthly update of how these people are doing in their treatment. We don't get into what's actually said within their therapy sessions. That's not something we get into. We just want to know that they're going, that they're attending therapy, that they're getting their medications, and that they're staying compliant. And as long as they're doing that, they can successfully complete our program. I think, what do they say, it's like six weeks to learn a habit? And in this situation, we're hoping being on a program like this for a year creates good habits, and then these people will be great members of our community going forward. And that's really what we're looking to do with this program. So, I'm open for any questions you may have specifically about the program. We're very excited about it. Like I said, I think we can serve a portion of our community that really needs these services at this point.
No, Commissioners, my fellow City Commissioners, any questions or comments for Ms. Thompson on this program?
Commissioner Wilson, may I please want to say thank you for your hard work, and it's definitely needed, not just for our community, but the entire state of Kansas as well, and I greatly appreciate your efforts. Hello, Ms. Robin. Thank you all for your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. Any other comments or questions from fellow Commissioners? I would just, go ahead, Commissioner Vatter?
Yeah, I just, I know it's been needed for many years. I'm just trying to figure out how the process works, and I looked through some of this. So, basically, making that determination that they are going to be on diversion is not going to be, I mean, okay, just explain to me a little bit about the process, if you're picking up somebody, how that works.
So, if we get notified that they have an issue either through reading the police reports or their defense attorney indicate that they feel that they may have a mental health issue or perhaps already having services provided to them through the Guidance Center or the VA. We have a quite extensive packet of forms that they will fill out, allowing release of information, allowing for us to contact the Guidance Center or the VA. As we're going through this, they will go out and meet with the Guidance Center if they don't already have a therapist there. They have walk-in sessions during the week. They, I've worked closely with Johnson County and Overland Park, who also have similar programs. Our Guidance Center prefers them to come in on a walk-in basis rather than doing a scheduled meeting. We think that that's going to work best with their current services. They will screen them, they will go through the different definitions that we have for what is severe and persistent mental illness. I have those definitions that I can share with you if you want. As they go through that, they're going to look at, did this person, do they have a mental illness? Are they, you know, is it persistent? Is it something that has been ongoing for the last two years or a period of time, and it's contributed to the offense that they're in court for? And if that's the situation, they will most likely qualify for the diversion, and then they'll work with our diversion officer. She screens them also, and she's the one who makes the recommendation that they go to the Guidance Center or the VA. Someone can have their own private individual provider. The only thing about that is, if it's in the county that, or out of the county, those providers have to agree to provide us with a monthly report. Otherwise, they're going to have to do the county program. Does that answer your question?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Commissioner Leonhard?
Yeah, Commissioner Leonhard, yeah, no, thank you for all your hard work. This is much needed, a step in the right direction. I have a couple of questions. What happens for the repeat offenders that do not, you know, comply or complete the diversion?
So...
Because you're probably going to have some of those people that maybe need some inpatient care, or, you know, this all sounds like it's more outpatient.
Yes, and so if we have someone who qualifies for the program and they're not in compliance, they're, you know, it's quite often expected to see some substance abuse, some missing of therapy sessions, some of those kind of issues are something we quite often see with individuals getting mental health services. We have the ability with this program to do some internal sanctions without going and revoking their diversion. So that would include either extending the diversion period or ordering some kind of inpatient treatment or some other kind of services that we think would be necessary. And that would be in conjunction with what the recommendations are that are coming from either the Guidance Center or the VA.
Okay, thank you.
Uh-huh.
Is this just for adults, or would it include youth also if they had mental, if they committed a crime, or, you know, maybe not that serious a crime, but they have, you know, they have some mental health challenges?
Well, in our court, we generally only see people who are 18 and over unless it's a trafficking fraction, and that's, we have that under a different program.
Okay.
So generally speaking, this would just be for adults who are 18 and over.
Okay. I think it's really a very good initiative because Kansas is, just in my research over the last month or two, Kansas has a relatively low percent, like 5% of, you know, cases or whatever, go into a diversion program. So, I mean, maybe it'll start slow, but I think it's definitely going in the right direction because I think nationwide, the percentage is 10%. So Kansas is just half of that with regard to people getting into a diversion, which seems to be a cost-effective way of trying to turn people's behavior around, and if they've got the right attitude, and it hasn't been that serious of a crime, I think there can be some good results. And we do know that we still have a very significant mental health challenge within our community, and as Chief said, he and I and the city manager and some other people, including Mr. Rickert, worked on that Mental Health Task Force. So, this is really, I was also impressed by the quality of your policy report and the document that explained the program. I thought it was very well-written and very understandable. So, as far as I'm concerned, anybody else? Commissioner Price, do you have?
One question for the Chief.
Yes, sir.
And for Ms. Thompson. Do police officers ever recommend people for this, or your job is to, I don't want to say arrest, but, you know, take the defendant to the court system, and then the court system does the recommendation, does the evaluation and decides this, or does the police department have some input there?
So, at the initial contact by the police, you know, we have very few options. It's either take some enforcement action or not. But I think, moving forward into this program, I would anticipate that it's a collaborative approach, that the officers understand in, you know, the context of what they were dealing with, that it is, that the criminal issue, however minor it is, is sort of a side issue and that there's probably some underlying issues. And so I would envision a scenario, very often, there'd be communication with Ms. Thompson's office that says, hey, we had to arrest this person for criminal trespass, but we have some familiarity. So we would certainly do that. I'd be confident that Ms. Thompson would say, hey, we're thinking about diversion for this person, and, you know, are there any objections? For example, were there any violence towards the officers during the arrest or something like that? That would certainly eliminate them from that sort of thing. But I would see it as a collaborative effort between all of us to make sure that ultimately we come to the right decision about how to treat the person that needs treatment.
Thank you.
And I would agree with that. It's, you know, sometimes you can tell through the report that that's an issue, but sometimes I'll get, you know, communication, whether it's through Pat or Debbie, the clerk, who's been notified that there's an issue, defense counsel. We definitely see it as a collaborative effort between the police department and all of us, so, yep.
And your ultimate goal, Chief, is that the recidivism rate would go down, some people get proper treatment, the cost people see those same...
There's a couple of things, that, cost savings, not having to put people in jail, you know, all of it, you know, ultimate goal would be to make the community safer. Whereas we're putting, we're incarcerating people, where that's sort of a symptom of the bigger problem, and so ultimately, it's public safety. We want to make the community safer, but, you know, where there's an opportunity to divert that person from the criminal justice system to the right location, results in cost savings, people are safer, and ultimately, getting that person on the right track, I think, is the sort of series of goals we're trying to accomplish.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
How long has Wichita had their Mental Health Diversion Program approximately? Do you know?
Oh, gosh, it's, it's been, yeah, I think it's almost 10 years. It's been quite, they were kind of the, the...
Sure, pilot or...
Yeah, the pilot program in the state of Kansas, and, in fact, they've had people from across the nation come and see their program, so, yeah, it's very good.
Now, is this something that, this is something, we don't have to vote on this as a City Commission, do we? I mean, and so you're briefing us on this, and you're going to go forth and do great work, right? I mean...
That is the intention.
Okay, that's good, and I want to thank Ms. McDowell also, because I know that you had a lot to do with this based on what Ms. Thompson has said, so thank you very much. And like I said, it reads very well, very well, well-written, very logical, and it's something that it's time to do, and please come back, you know, at a good time and let us know how it's going.
Yes, sir.
Will do, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson.
Thank you, Karen.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the next topic is going to be the semi-annual report from the Leavenworth County Development Corporation. And we probably have Mr. Steve Jack, who's joining us via Zoom, our go-to-meeting.
There he is.
Good evening, Mr. Jack.
Good evening, Mayor Griswold and Commissioners. Always a pleasure to appear before you, and as usual, I do have a PowerPoint we'll go through. Let's go to the first slide of that.
Okay.
Or the second slide, there you go. As we do, we took a look at some unemployment rate data, and I've got that expressed in several slides, so I'll go through them pretty quickly. The first thing you'd notice is I've got some red arrows going up, which is bad, because that's the unemployment rate, and I have some red arrows going down, which is also bad, because that is the actual numbers. So, our unemployment rate, based on where we were in August, excuse me, was 6.7%. August of last year, we were at 3.6%. I will tell you this, I'm going to sprinkle in some more recent numbers. Just this afternoon, the state released September numbers, so I'll go ahead and describe what's on paper or what's on your screen, but also mention where that 6.7% has gone from August to September, and it's actually continued its decline from the high of March and April and is now 5.2%. The city of Leavenworth unemployment rate dropped, or rose from 4.1% last year to 7.9%. This year, we lost 821 jobs in that year from August to August. The balance of county unemployment rate rose from 3.2 to 5.9, and we lost about 1,081 jobs in the balance of counties. So, as a county, the unemployment rose, actually, the labor force dropped 1,321, and the, and yes, the labor force dropped 1,300, while the number of people employed dropped 1,902. Okay, next slide.
Hey, Mr. Jack, do you have the city of Leavenworth unemployment rate for September?
Pardon?
You gave us the unemployment rate for September for the county. Do you have it for the city too? Yeah? We have it August, the reports that you just received today.
Right, right, right. I did not pencil that in.
Okay.
If, yeah, I'm sorry, because I just saw it this afternoon, and I was multitasking, I was on another webinar, and I saw that it had come in, and I glanced to see if we had dropped.
Okay.
Typically, I'm going to ballpark it probably in the 6.5%. That would make sense, it'd be around 6.5.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, yep, you bet. Now, this map, the county unemployment rate map, you can see all these counties out in western Kansas that are still in the 2% to 3% to 3.5% unemployment. The highest unemployment is Sedgwick County at 10.9, in Wichita, the aircraft industry, Sumner, just south of that is at 10%, Gary County's at 9.1%. And then surrounding counties, Atchison, 8.1%, and that's dropped to 6.3. As we talked about, Leavenworth County, our county, 6.7%, and that's dropped in this one month from August to September to 5.2. Wyandotte County, 9.3, and one of the highest in the state, that's dropped to 7.4%. And Johnson County was at 6.1% in August and has dropped even further to 4.7%. Next slide, please. This shows you the county unemployment rate, and you could see for the year, you could see January, February, and March, we were below further, in between 3.5% and 4%, and then March and April happened, and in April, we were at 11.5%. May, still very high, 10.5%. It dropped in June and July, 7.4%, August, 6.7%, and as we said, that continues to decline and normalize now at 5.2%. Next slide, please. Now, the initial jobless claims by county, and I noticed when I was looking at this tonight, it starts at 2,000 over on the left and increases to 14,000. That's the top of the chart. I just cut off the ones on 10 and 12 and 14,000. So, that peak in late March and early April of purple is the, are the initial jobless claims for the three counties in the service area, the Workforce Partnership service area of Leavenworth County, Johnson County, and Wyandotte County. You'll see that Leavenworth County contributes less than our larger partners to that initial jobless claim. To put some figures to it, that purple has dropped from 13,000, when it was at its high, to around 5,000, where it is now. The line along the bottom, Leavenworth County, you really can't tell much, it looks pretty flat, but that's because it is relatively flat, and it is varied for several periods now, several, actually, several months, at around 250 to 350. And on the next slide, we get a little more detail on that comparison to a year ago, and this comparison was made in, on the 19th of September of this year, looking back at the 21st of September of 2019. And Johnson County experienced a fourfold increase. Wyandotte County, not quite 10 times as much as it was a year before, and Leavenworth, not quite as significant, and again, this is Leavenworth County, 313%, so it went from about 100 to 322. Since this chart, just in the last three weeks, that 322 dropped September 26 to 227, October 3rd, 250, and October 10th, the last one I saw, was 262. So, it's ranging in that 250 and up to 322, but the last three weeks, it's actually less than 300. The average for the area, those three counties, is a fivefold increase in initial jobs claims every week, and of course, that's important to the Unemployment Office and Workforce Partnership handling that load. And so it is, it hasn't normalized yet, but it is definitely coming down. Next slide, please. I want to talk about some of the COVID-19 assistance programs. The last time I appeared before you, I think, was in May, and some of this was happening. In August, we were able to look back at the SBA's PPP loans. For Leavenworth County, there were 591 loans, 3,106 retained jobs, and about $18,000 in loans. The city of Leavenworth took up about half of those, 294 loans, 1,465 retained jobs, and nearly $9 million in loans. That was for just the PPP. The Governor's Spark Task Force had, really postponed the PPP loans, but the small business working capital grants came along available from the state of Kansas. And I don't have a breakout yet for the city or the county, but as a state, they handed out about seven, well, they had about 7,000 applications for 138 million. So, when we get that data, we'll pass it on to you. And then I did want to note a program that you all have and are administering, and that's CARES Act funding that came from the state, through the county, onto the cities, and so I defer to Taylor and Paul on that. But those were three big areas that the SBA, the Governor's Spark Task Force, and then the CARES Act funding that the city is having, that helped keep a lot of businesses afloat during this period. Next slide, please.
Hey, Mr. Jack, this is, this is...
Yes?
Mayor Griswold. Those numbers look pretty robust for those, for that, particularly for that PPP loan program. I mean, do you have any, I mean, what do you think, looking at the numbers? Obviously, a lot of jobs are retained, and the dollar amount in loans are, you know, pretty high in terms of millions of dollars. What's your, what's your assessment in terms of how that program went in Leavenworth County?
I thought it reached pretty deep into the business community. Obviously, 590, we have, you know, more than 590 businesses, but that's a pretty significant number.
Right.
And we had some businesses that were essential that declined to wade into that PPP arena, and so I was pretty encouraged. Now, that money doesn't last forever.
Right.
And we're still wearing masks and are cautious about our hospitality and restaurant business, at least some of us are, and that's really the sector that's hurt the most. We've had some manufacturers in Leavenworth, in the city, who have told us their business has been dinged a bit. We've got one of our businesses that... We've got one of our businesses that manufactures heating elements for the aircraft industry. And as long as they're not retroing airliners and not building more, then that segment of their business is going to go down. It doesn't really matter what happens locally. It matters what happens globally for them. Although they do have quite a lot of other sectors that they have focused on, so.
Do you know whether a lot of these firms, I know that it was like a 1% loan, but it, you had to go through a process of forgiveness. I know there was a lot of paperwork, you know, involved with that. Do you, do you have any idea where that forgiveness aspect of these 1% interest loans are, stand at?
I, 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 not definitive, I can't give you a definitive answer, but I knew that there were some who were very concerned that it was going to be a gotcha.
Yeah.
And I think that the SBA has recognized that and we're trying sincerely to allow companies to get into that forgiveness phase, so.
Okay.
That's, that's, anecdotally, that's what we heard.
Sure.
From the companies we've been working with.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure, absolutely. Those are some active recruitment projects. These are just in the last couple of months. They don't reflect everything that we've worked on this year, but some that we're looking at right now for the city. Project Rosco came to us from CBiz and Commerce. And I titled those active recruitment projects, but right now, it doesn't look quite as active. It's a biopharma company, they're looking for a 10-acre site or building. We submitted an incentive letter, and I think that involved some discussions with the city manager and your commission. So we did want to throw out some incentives for the new Leavenworth Business Park, because we do have 10-acre sites there. And the last we heard about Rosco is that they're now refining their search to opportunity zones. We have an opportunity zone, but we don't have an industrial site of 10 acres in the opportunity zone that is shovel-ready and ready to go. There are some opportunity zones in other communities, none in our county, that have an industrial park. So that would be, that'd be great if we did, but we don't. And so right now, it looks like they're looking at opportunity zones.
Give us a quick.
Project Stargaze, you all know about that?
Mr. Jack, give us a.
Last one was, yes, go ahead.
Give us a quick definition of an opportunity zone, and can we move our parks up to opportunity zone status?
The opportunity zone is determined by poverty levels and ISA code. And it's my understanding they are in the vicinity of east Leavenworth from metropolitan down south, about halfway through the city.
Okay, I understand now.
So it's, it's, they're told what they are.
Okay.
And that's.
Those are determined by census, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Uh-huh. Project Stargaze, I have nothing new on that. We were one of four Kansas communities to submit a proposal for US Space Command. Have no idea what the election will mean to that. We were one of, as I said, four, Leavenworth, City of Leavenworth, Wyandotte County, Kansas City, Kansas, Derby, and Wichita were the, were the four. And are the four. JLL had a manufacturing project, Johns Langley South through KC A.D.C. This was a early look at 8 to 10-acre sites for a manufacturing plant. And so that is still in play. Project Silver came from the Kansas Department of Commerce. I think Jeff Freeman out of the Chicago office had that. It's a need for 20 to 35-plus acres for a 240,000 to 350,000 square foot building for a food processor. And then a second food processor needing 20 to 25 acres for a 200,000 square foot building. Obviously, we are sensitive to where our park is at geographically and close to residential. And so for each of these projects, we have discussions with Paul and Taylor about what we know about the projects. And typically, if you see us submit something for our hat ring for the Leavenworth Business and Technology Park, it's because we've been told that these are not too odorous or not odorous at all, and that there's no killing. It could be, it could be a bakery, and it certainly could be the next Cereal Ingredients, which is a food processor that does pretty well in that, in that part of town. Next slide, please. We do have some active, and I'm calling them local real estate projects. They're sort of halfway between what Lisa Hack works on, existing businesses, and what I work on are more of the real estate needs. And we have four pretty significant projects that have popped up in the last few months. Project Franklin, as we've been talking to them for about a year now, and Paul and Taylor, Lisa and I, and the state of Kansas have met with this company. They're looking at 10 acres. They want to build an 80,000 to 100,000 square foot facility. And that is, well, the current COVID-19 pandemic is delaying that project. It is certainly not dead. We talk to them about every month or two. And we just had a conversation with them about 10 days ago. And it's still on the table, but it's probably going to be a decision made in 2021. Gary Carlson project, this is three acres. They want to build a 10,000 to 20,000 square foot facility. And we're trying to get fancy on this, and the Port Authority was, and do a development plan instead of just a straight sale of a three-acre parcel. And we have been, well, we had an attorney that wasn't responding as quickly as we need. And so today, we had a work session of the Port Authority. One of the agenda items was to talk about hiring a new attorney. And so I've interviewed a couple of them, and I think both of them, or either of them, one or both, or every other one, we may turn to. But I think we've got two attorneys that can step up and help us put this development plan together so we can get on with this project and then anything down the road. Project Salute is an existing Leavenworth company. They're looking to add 10,000 square feet. Taylor and Lisa met with the company on September 17. So that's still in play. And then I received a phone call from a Dallas Realtor looking for a 50,000 to 150,000 square foot facility in the area. So this is a company that wanted to be in this Leavenworth-Lansing area. And so I told them we didn't have a building that large, but that we had 35,000 square feet in the first city center. And that seemed to pique their interest. But we also gave them some build-to-suit options in the new Leavenworth Park. So we'll continue to have discussions about, about that project. So I'm encouraged that we've got some existing businesses that are interested in staying and expanding or moving into larger facilities. And one more before I describe this, the business recruitment, marketing, and assistance, and the sources and the results is, five years ago, we came before the commission to ask if you would vacate a road for Cereal Ingredients and Gary Carlson, because they needed three acres for a 70,000 square foot addition. You did, thank you. And we signed a mortgage that was about $140,000 price tag for approximately three acres, unless Cereal Ingredients increased their population, their employee population, by 32 jobs. And I think they were at 104, so 32 would be 136. And then if they did that in a five-year measurement period, then we would forgive the mortgage. And that period has just passed. And so we'll be doing some title work to transfer the ownership of those three acres that Port Authority owns, that Cereal Ingredients was buying through the new jobs over completely to Cereal Ingredients. So we're excited when a plan works. And, and by the way, the three acres that they have accommodated part of the 70,000 in the parking lot, but there's still room for additional growth for Cereal Ingredients in addition to the nine-acre parcel just to the north of that. There's a nine-acre lot, but then there's actually some amount of acreage, two or three acres that Cereal Ingredients, as they continue to expand, are considering. So, so far, in terms of leads and prospects, we're ahead of where we were last year, way ahead. We've exceeded what we did in 2018. And I don't know whether we'll hit 2017 marks, but we've had 72 leads, 39 prospects, four visits, and the locations of a couple of businesses in the urban S Business Park in Tonga Noxie, and then Mutual Savings Association is doing a branch bank that we helped locate some land for along the main corridor in Lansing. So you can see where the leads come from. Last year, Commerce gave us about 19 leads that we might have fit. I mean, Commerce has more than 19, but we don't see them all because there may be some projects that are specific to other regions of the state. But 19 is all we got last year. We've had 26 so far this year. KC A.D.C. is about on target with where they were last year. And then we've received 10 more leads that have come directly from a Realtor or talking to a company. So that's very encouraging. And then, next slide, the, just to give you an idea, in 2020, our marketing meetings, tours, and events, pre-pandemic meetings, it was starting off to be what should have been a really great year. We had discussions with a lot of developers and big construction companies, Man Trust, EPC Real Estate, BTC Construction, LS Commercial, and the Callan Gordon Construction. I attended the Site Selection Guild Conference. About 40 of the premier site consultants in the world were there, March 9, 10, and 11. And at that point, no one was wearing masks, but everyone was sanitizing their hands. So there was lots of Purell, there weren't many handshakes, we were all bumping elbows. But within a week, many of our companies, and certainly LC D.C., in late March, all of April and all of June worked, or actually, all of April and May, worked from home. And then in June, went back to the office and socially distanced and wear masks in the hallways. There were a lot of marketing opportunities that were postponed, as you can see, until 2021. Team Kansas, which is affiliated with the Kansas Department of Commerce, we contributed $5,000 to that effort. That got us a couple of dinners and an event in Kansas City. All of those are postponed until 2021. KC A.D.C.'s not doing any marketing travel right now. And we typically are involved in a couple of those each year at least. KC A.D.C. had a real estate council event typically in August. At the KU, the baseball game canceled. We canceled our LC D.C. golf tournament in September. S.I.O.R., the Society of Industrial Office Realtors, canceled their event in Kansas City on September 24. It appears that we're going to have to cancel our VIP event. And one thing that we had talked about doing for the Leavenworth Business and Technology Park is to do something similar to what we tried on November 1 of 2019 in Tonga Noxie, and that was an open house where we could invite industrial Realtors from the Kansas City metro area to an event, something fun, and have a lunch and some beers and stuff, and entertain them. But that's obviously not going to happen this year, but it's something that we have the resources to do when we are allowed to do. And hopefully, that'll occur in 2021. The next slide shows, though, that we have done still quite a bit of marketing. Austin Byer from CBRE came up. We have canceled that, I think, three times. And then finally, he said, "I'll just meet you at the business park, and we can get out of our cars and we can go look." And so, so he took a look at the Gary Carlson Park, as well as the Leavenworth Business and Technology Park. We had Peter Ruiz, who was the new Commerce rep out of Los Angeles, and Jeff Freeman out of Chicago. They came together on August 28, and we toured the two parks here. Bill Murphy is the new Deputy Secretary of Commerce, working directly with Secretary Toland. And he came over for a couple-hour meeting on September 4. Grant Lancap from Occidental Management. We also gave him a site tour on September 22. JR Robel came by. He's an old friend who is now working from, with Natvolt's Construction. And they have a presence now, working on the school. And so he came by, wanted to know more about the organization and opportunities here. That happened earlier this month. And then Craig Van Way and Samantha Perry. Craig is the new field representative or in-state business development representative manager. Craig, and then Sam, Samantha is our representative for northeast Kansas. And so they came, and we talked about the new business parks as well as the existing industries. So they'll help us work with existing industries primarily. And then we've had a lot of virtual online meetings, as I'm sure you have had. The Southern Economic Development Council annual meeting was in August. Our own Kansas Economic Development Alliance meeting, a fall conference, was going to be in Salina, and we moved it to a virtual meeting. And it worked out great. We had better attendance than I think we've ever had, 125 people on Zoom for that. We did about six webinars from 9:00 in the morning to 3:30 in the afternoon. Site Selectors Guild, that the same group, I was in Atlanta in March before everything got shut down, is going to online webinars. And I just sat through one this afternoon and picked up some good information. And so that happened today, as well as this morning. There's the First Annual KC Commercial Real Estate Summit. That was a three-hour event. So I've been on Zoom a lot today. Mark Nelson, Manufacturing Distribution Update, is this Thursday, as well as the Kansas Economic Policy Conference at KU. All that stuff's online. And then KC A.D.C., several of you have been to the annual meeting. That is taking place this year, virtually, on Zoom, and that takes place November 18. So that is my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions or comments from commissioners? Steve, I've got three quick ones on just generally how Cereal Ingredients faring with the, you know, the economic consequences of COVID-19. the, you know, the economic consequences of COVID-19, both nationally and internationally. I mean, just generally, are they hanging in there?
At Cereal Ingredients?
Yes, yes, sir.
Yeah. No, they're doing, they're doing great. They have, they've been bouncing back from about 185 to 200 jobs. We talked to the lady that runs their lab, their bakery, and she said they're right at 200, and they're hiring people, and they have not. They just haven't stopped.
Okay.
Food is doing, food's in a sector that does real well because we all have to eat.
Sure.
And they're doing, they're doing great.
Yeah, I was just, that's good news. I just was wondering, I think initially, you know, when the crisis came, there was some disruptions in supply chains and things like that, but, you know, it doesn't sound like that's, at least at this point, you know, affecting Cereal Ingredients. So I appreciate that update. Going back to that slide that has the, you know, the graph, the trend lines from the jobless claims by county, obviously, we are, the number of jobless claims in Leavenworth County much lower than, you know, our neighboring counties. Probably we don't have as many people as Johnson County and Wyandotte County, but what do you attribute that to? I mean, we have some big federal employers in Leavenworth, and we have, looks like we did pretty good as far as the Pechek Protection Program. What do you, what do you attribute that really kind of flat line for Leavenworth County in terms of the jobless claims?
Well, I would say, you know, and we, we kind of decried the fact that we don't have as many restaurants as they have in the Legends area in Wyandotte County, or certainly in many communities over in Park and Lenexa, and perhaps even Shawnee, Olathe. There's a lot of places to go eat and
Right.
A lot of hotels and stuff. And that got hit the hardest.
Yeah.
So Wyandotte County's increase of nine or tenfold, and Johnson County's at almost fivefold. We didn't have that. We have a lot of government jobs. The folks at the state prison in Lansing, the penitentiary, the DB, everybody at Fort Leavenworth, still going to work, essential workers, along with all our manufacturers. We did have Hallmark shut down at least temporarily.
Okay.
But most of the other manufacturers just kept rolling along, trying to accommodate.
Good. That's a good, yeah, that's good. That gives us a good snapshot or understanding of what's happened over the last six or seven months. But finally, just very quickly, I know that the Department of Commerce is working, you know, with stakeholders across the state on this Framework for Growth, which is this economic development strategy for Kansas. Can you just give us a quick update on that?
Yes. It's, 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 anytime you do something that large, that major, that's supposed to be the Redwood Crider Report that really changed the face of economic development in Kansas back in 1986, and, and you haven't changed much, or, I mean, anything dramatically in, in all these years until now. And you attempt to do something like that, it's some heavy lifting. And so the report was written, and then COVID hit, and perhaps taught the reports some lessons, and I think that they have revisited that over the last several months. And, but in speaking to the secretary, there should be a final direction, a final report in November. So it's probably three or four weeks from finally getting up on the website. And then there will be different programs that will be on the legislative agenda, which was pretty light last year. There was an economic development bill that would allow Embergy to give a big user discount or rate, or rate discount like they were able to do on the Missouri side and unable to do on Kansas. That passed. And then there was a bill that gave some more flexibility to the state training programs and the High Performance Incentive Program incentive, and that passed, but never made it to the governor's desk who favored it because they did a gut and go on it in the last day of the session and used the bill number for some other unrelated idea. So we're going to go back for that in January and February, and we'll see what happens. But there'll be, there'll be several other projects, some issues with venture capital that I think will be positive, that will be brought up during the session.
Okay. Yeah, thank you for that rundown. I appreciate it. Any other comments or questions for Mr. Jack? I have one.
Mr. Pressker? Mr. Jack, you're, I know you've talked about cereal, Cereal Ingredients quite a bit. They are still looking for employees, are they not?
Yes, I'm glad you mentioned that because I think if we can continue to give them a pipeline of, of employees in our community, they will continue to grow. And, and if they run out of people, and we've had some people who've worked there for many, many years, they've been here now 15 years, but as it gets harder to find people, particularly that would like to work a 12-hour shift, and so they have quite a few of the production people that work from 6:00 in the morning to 6:00 in the evening, and then a second shift that comes on at 6:00 and works till 6:00 in the morning. Takes a special kind of person to do that, and they've got quite a lot of people that do, do it. But absolutely, their wages are higher than many production plants in the region. And so if, if anybody is watching this and is interested in a, in a good-paying job with full benefits, then you could talk to the HR department at Cereal Ingredients.
Oh, very good. Thank you. Any other questions or comments for Mr.? Go ahead, Commissioner Bowden.
Mr. Steve Jack? Commissioner Wilson here?
Yes, yes, sir.
Again, just, just, if you know, just right offhand, do you know the starting salary for the position at Cereal Ingredients?
I'm going to guess that it's, last time I heard, it was $16 an hour during the day shift and a dollar shift differential for the evening. So they start folks in around the $16 an hour, maybe $17 an hour plus benefits.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yep, you bet.
Commissioner Bowden?
Yeah, Steve, I just wanted to let you know that I really enjoyed the economic outlook session. I'm sorry I had to leave during your presentation, but I had another meeting. But I, I really did enjoy hearing about the region and how, how the economic outlook. It was encouraging, I have to say.
Good, good, thank you. Yeah. Jeremy Hill at the Center for Economic, Economic Research Center down in Wichita State asked us to, to appear with him and give the kind of local perspective, and he talked about the region and had some, some pretty fascinating information to share. So thank you all for, for coming, those of you who did.
Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner Bowden. Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Leonhardt, did you have something? Okay.
No, no, I just wanted, I was there with Commissioner Bowden, really enjoyed the economic meeting that was, we had the other day. You're always a good speaker. Thanks, Mr. Jack.
Fair, you bet.
Thank you both commissioners for attending, and I don't think there are any more questions or comments. Want to thank you for coming this evening, Mr. Jack. Comprehensive report as always, and we are, we'll consider ourselves updated. Good update, and we'll see you next time.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks. Appreciate it. The next item on the agenda is the, to review the revised investment policy for the city.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, I'm going to turn this over to our Finance Director, Ruby Milline, here in a second. The commission has seen a number of new policies over the last couple of years dealing with aspects of the city's financial management, whether that is purchasing policies, cash management policies. And so tonight Ruby is here to review the revised investment policy, so I will turn it over.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, good evening.
Good evening.
The issue before us is to consider revisions to the investment policy to add to the types of investments in which the city may participate. As a little bit of background, Kansas statutes, number one, authorize cities to invest cash that is not immediately needed for their intended purposes, and they also direct the types of investments that the city can invest those monies into. The city's investment policy incorporates those that are outlined by the state statutes. And during the past year, some of our local banks have offered investments that are, that participate in the Certificates of Deposit Registry Service, which is CDERS-type programs. And the CDERS-type program and other qualifying reciprocal programs allows for participating institutions to arrange to deposit monies into CDs and other things, other types of investments that fall below the $250,000 mark, which is what the FDIC insurance coverage is. And so in order to do that, we needed to get permission from the commission, and then we have to present the policy to the State Municipal Investment Pool Board for their permission to invest in those. There are several other local entities that invest in some of those. I talked most recently with Harvey County, and they invest in those types of programs. I ran the idea by Greg Warrenburg, who is the city's financial advisor, and he said he has several clients that also participate in those. With the insurance, with the interest rates being as low as they are, some of these investments have come in paying a higher interest rate than what we're currently receiving, and so I thought that this might be a good opportunity to expand the types of investments that we have. So if you have had a chance to review the policy and provide recommendations, we can incorporate those recommendations, and then we'll bring the policy back to you for approval at a later date. So if you have any other questions?
Ms. Milline, approximately how much money do we have invested right now?
About $14 million.
And is that, is that on average ongoing?
Those are ongoing. Part of that, that fluctuates, and a lot of what we have invested right now, it was tied to the Thornton Street temporary notes. And so we time those investments so that they can, they mature at the same time we think we're going to have payouts on, whether it's on an infrastructure project or whether it's on other debt issuances or anything like that. But, so we don't, they're not, they don't all come due at the same time, they are spread out, and some of them are like three months, some of them are six months. When the interest rates started going down, we invested, one investment in an, in an 18-month investment, and so right now it's our highest earning one. It'll, it'll come, it'll come due pretty soon, though, so.
How much, when you say it's the highest earning, what, what's the return?
Well, the, for a while, the interest rate was going up, and we got to a point where we were receiving almost 3% interest, which was a lot considering how it's been recently.
Sure.
And then they started declining, so I think the one that we have now is a little over 2% that's getting ready to mature. Right now, our biggest rate is on our repurchase agree, which is like our savings account, so.
And so we can, now we can just invest in not only that, but like CDARS-type programs? We can't go out and buy municipal bonds or corporate bonds or anything like that?
We can invest in Kansas municipal bonds.
We can.
Yes, and we could, once we've made revisions to the policy, we could also invest in our own temporary notes if, if the situation should arise. And so we can invest in U.S. Treasury investments also, so.
Okay.
Mostly what we have now are CDs or savings accounts.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
But this, this policy report that we read initially, and I think primarily is focusing on the Certificates of Deposit Registry Service, CDARS-type programs?
Yes.
Okay.
We, there were some other updates that I, that I made to them, but mostly it was just fine-tuning the language, and the main purpose of updating it was to be able to include different types of investments, like the CDERS program, so.
Yeah, okay. Is there, you know, I like the, the, the criteria that you use for, you know, the, the investment criteria, you know, the safety, the liquidity, the yield, the local investments. I think that's very solid. I mean, I don't, it seemed pretty comprehensive. I don't have any specific recommendation other than what you've had in this policy report. Any, anything from fellow commissioners as far as feedback to Ms. Milline on this, this particular agenda item? I think it's, first of all, well-written, understandable, and this one will have to come back, right?
Yes, this one, right.
To the City Commission? Unless you have something, I just think it's, you know, something we need to do and that we'll take a look at it, if not next week, you know, it'll be in one of the upcoming regular meetings. So I don't think we have any further questions. Thank you for coming this evening.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ruby.
You both have good work.
Thank you.
Next is snow and ice control policy.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, each year, the city staff presents to the commission the snow and ice control policy, including any updates, changes, or edits we do to the plan. This gives the Public Works Director also a chance to speak to the public and the commission, and just give you a little primer, again, a little reminder of some of our operations as we enter snow and ice season. So I'm going to turn this over to Mike McDonald, our Public Works Director.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. McDonald.
Good evening, just Mayor and Commissioners. Hopefully the audio goes better this week than it did last. The, the snow and ice plan is what we try to bring to the commission to remind ourselves and our citizens that winter is coming. We have seen winter weather as early as early November, and we have paved streets as late as late December, so it can happen anytime, and it's not terribly predictable at this point. The city has had a, essentially the same snow plan since 1993. It has been updated periodically, although the updates are becoming less and less dramatic. We have made a few changes this year. They are essentially, correct some mistyped words and adjust some formatting. We did find a few other odds, odd things in there that we need to bring back to clean up, like we still, for some reason, list 18th Street between Metropolitan and US 73 as an emergency snow route. That street has been gone for, what, 10 years or more, something on that order? So there's, there's that type of a thing, but the core of the plan is the same as it has been for years. We have the, to get ready for our winter, we do have a, essentially a team meeting, which occurred earlier this week, where we discussed snow plans with City Lansing, Leavenworth County, and School District, and we reach out to Fort Leavenworth. Sometimes they participate in that discussion, sometimes they don't, but we do know their phone numbers, and they know ours, and so we can coordinate our activities. Particularly if they have an early release, we try to adjust our resources to facilitate traffic leaving the fort and going on to wherever it is that they go. Kind of the key to the plan is emergency snow routes. That's the second page of the policy report. These are streets that the city focuses on as, as the first priority. Our priority is to maintain traffic on the routes shown. They are identified in the field with little snow flags or signs that say emergency snow routes. If you are living on one of these roadways, you should move your car off of it when you get bad weather for a couple of reasons. One is if your car is not in the way, we plow a lot closer to the curb and you get a better clear street earlier. And secondly, if there is an emergency snow event declared by the city manager or the police chief, then if your car is interfering with our operations, then we can tow that. This is the tow to the tow lot where This is the tow to the tow lot, where you get to pay to get your car back. The classifications of storms are shown in the following pages. Kind of hidden in the text is the definition of what is an emergency snowstorm. Generally speaking, if it's eight inches or more of snow, if, in a 24-hour period, it by definition is an emergency snow event. Although, what we've identified as a Class B storm is the snow in the range of three to eight inches may be declared an emergency snow event by the, once again, city manager or the police chief. Interestingly, there's a gap between a Class C storm and a Class B storm, which, a Class C is up to two inches, and B starts at three. So, I think, in a practical sense, we have just looked at snow in excess of two inches to be evaluated for declaration of a snow emergency. We have not had one for a few years. There was, a few years back, I think we had three in one winter, and I think people rapidly found out that by moving their cars, it's, it's a better event. Our, our staff has been practicing with the equipment. We have new employees, it seems every year we have new employees. They need to gain confidence with the equipment, what it can and cannot do. We have secured a salt supply contract, and our salt dome is full, and there's additional salt ready to replenish supplies should we use it. And typically, the salt in the dome is good for at least two years of normal storms. We hope to, we hope to not need all of that, all of that salt. Becky Beaver, our street foreman, is here. If you have questions of her and how, how she's preparing. Additionally, Deputy Director Mike Cooper is, is at the meeting tonight as well. We look forward to bringing snow and ice control to the community once again when the need arises, and appreciate the support that the commission has provided us over the years. Oh, one last thing, everyone always asks is, can you please not plow my driveway in? Unfortunately, everybody's driveway gets plowed in, including mine. The thing I would encourage you to do is, if you think about which way the snow plow goes, the, the snow that's about 20 feet from the direction the plow comes from is the snow that ends up in your driveway, you might consider moving that snow up into your yard or out somewhere else. That way, it kind of minimizes, but we do not have a person that waits for you to plow your driveway, and then drives around and plows it back in again, although we'd be used to that.
Good policy report. Any questions or comments for Mr. McDonald? Ms. Commissioner Preisinger?
Uh, Ms. McDonald.
Commissioner Leonhard.
Commissioner Preisinger will go first.
Ms. McDonald, what, are there any changes from previous years, from last year specifically?
There, there is no change to the policies or the practices between last year's presentation and this year's. We did find a few odd typos that were fixed and some formatting, so everything's properly indented, paragraphs are indented the same distance from page to page.
But no, no program or no program changes or any new requirements or nothing?
That's correct, sir. We've made, we've made no functional changes for operations.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Leonhard?
Commissioner Leonhard, yeah, Mr. McDonald, what is the criteria that identifies a street to be on an emergency snow route?
That is the choice of the city commission. This is typically the archerial and collector streets that have been identified as important for the movement of vehicles throughout the community. This is in ordnance that has been adopted and changed from time to time over the years. I think, at one point, we figured out that every, every house in Leavenworth is something not more than two blocks from an emergency snow route, and I kind of wonder if that isn't the way it was set up in the dawn of time.
Okay, and another question, just curiosity. The original plan was written in October 1993, so what, were you around then, before 93? What, what was happening then, before this plan was set in place?
It was, it was very similar, but it was a somewhat loosely organized set of, set of deadlines. We were not as formal about how we dealt with snow and ice as we are today. And our, between our Deputy Director of Public Works was Bob Lowry, who's gone on to great things elsewhere in Kansas and Texas, and Wes Ludwig, who was our Operations Superintendent, that absolutely drove them crazy. They were both retired military men, and they said, if you have a plan, you have to have a plan that looks like a plan. So, we put our heads together to create this document, which was, really came out of primarily the work of Wes Ludwig back in the early 90s.
Okay, thank you.
I have, I, I took a quick, just quickly reviewed, skimmed the snow and ice control plan, which wasn't part of the policy report, but was available to the commissioners to take a look at. But, just, Mr. McDonald, there is a responsibility of homeowners and business owners in terms of sidewalks that are out in front of their, their, their property, correct? I mean, there is a responsibility within like 24 hours to take care of the snow and ice on, on those sidewalks, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct. That has been in the plan for, since before I came to Leavenworth. Homeowners are responsible to maintain the public sidewalk that is on their property, and that is large sidewalks and small. They are subject to citation. This is always a controversial subject. Some communities in Kansas have enforced it aggressively. The city of Leavenworth has occasionally enforced it, focused on timeframes long after the storms have passed, trying to get safe passages for children to school, or perhaps in the downtown area. That is something that, how we enforce that is, is a discussion that is probably held best with somebody who's not me, but I don't, I don't get to direct that.
Right, well, I appreciate it, because I, I've heard some things, some, some feedback over the, over the last couple of years as far as from some constituents on that aspect of the snow and ice control plan. But it is, it is also for, like, business owners downtown. They've got that responsibility out in front of their businesses, correct?
Yeah, the, the city is set up to, after the emergency snow routes have been addressed, and the schools, if they're going to have school, we've dealt with the schools, we will go collect up the snow that gets kind of stuck in the downtown area.
Right.
We will generally pick it up and, and haul it off. We have traditionally tried to clear off sidewalks, and it's kind of a lose-lose thing. If you shovel the snow on the sidewalk into the street, it makes the streets even worse. If you don't do that till after we clean the streets off, then people can't park next to the curb. So, the last, I don't know, 15 years maybe, we have tried to get as much snow off the sidewalks in the downtown area as we can while we are getting ready to clear the streets downtown also. But, yes, it is a property and responsibility ultimately to ensure that the sidewalks are clear.
That's good, I didn't realize that. That's an interesting perspective. Any other questions or comments for Mr. McDonald? And this is just, I mean, we don't have to, at a, at a future meeting, we don't have to vote on this or anything. This is, this is good update, though. We don't know what kind of winter we're going to have. Last year, I don't think it was too, too bad with respect to snowstorms, but you never can tell. So, I appreciate the, the rundown on this particular aspect of city operations. Next, probably, Mr. McDo, eh, probably next, review draft Infrastructure Standards Manual?
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, I'll turn this again over to our Public Works Director in just a minute. Staff has been working for, I believe, well over a year to accumulate design standards and infrastructure into a single document for use inside the city. Sort of like the snow and ice policy manual, a lot of these practices existed. And then in individual projects, the city was extremely detailed in the specifications for each individual project and the bid specs. The city also relies on Public Works Association, APWA, and KDOT standards for many design details. But this effort was to put city design standards into a manual. This is viewed as sort of a living document, like development regulations, that as we move through time, not only would we, would we edit the standards that we have, but potentially add to them as we move forward. There were many opportunities during this process to deal with not only consultants, but also our area contractors, builders, to go through this item. So, I'm going to have Mr. McDonald touch on a little bit of, of big-picture view, and then maybe one or two areas where we ended up recommending something to the commission that we didn't quite see eye to eye with some of our developers, but we believe that it's a standard worth having. So, Mr. McDonald, turn it over to you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, that was a nice lead-in by the city manager. A lot of the work in the, that we are bringing to you this evening has been done by Mike Cooper, Deputy Director of Public Works, and this has been a work in progress for some time, with a lot of focus in the last year, to bring a single document that will provide basic set of expectations to the development community to start a conversation that they can have with getting the cost of the development that they're considering, and if they have questions or concerns, we know where we're starting from, and we can talk about them. Our goal was beyond trying to simplify choices, but we, long-term goal is to construct infrastructure that minimizes expenses to the public. Building streets that, that fall apart in a few years doesn't do anyone any good, because the city is on the hook to repair them, and that's the city at large. That has, we believe, happened in the past. We've worked away from that, and things are better now. But our goal, there's a lot of, of kind of observations and insight from not just working for the city of Leavenworth, but for other governments, working for contractors, observing infrastructure projects in other communities. We believe that we can improve long-term maintenance, reduce long-term maintenance, and ultimately, reduce costs to the citizens of the community. We tried to identify things in the manual, how wide is this sidewalk, that sort of thing. But I think some key changes that are worth talking about this evening are, we substantially increased the thickness of asphalt for all new streets, for what we had currently been allowing or seeing, or, or living on an older standard that has existed. Where intersecting gutter lines need to cross streets, there's usually a concrete ribbon that's generally known as a valley getter. These often seem to look really good for a few years and then fall apart, and we've had luck on recent projects by specifying wider and thicker concrete, and we've included that in the, in the recommendations. And one that has been a long time coming, in favor of many folks, many past city managers, is what we call a sidewalk bond, wherein in an organized development of any lots, sometimes a lot may not get built on, sometimes ever. And that is the lot that had the, the sidewalk on it, because the sidewalks in most residential developments are on one side of the street. So, if that lot doesn't get built on for whatever reason, or gets sold to an adjoining property to use as yard space, all of a sudden, there's a, there's no opportunity for a sidewalk to be constructed on that lot. Typically, it falls into the lap of the citizens to construct a sidewalk to complete a sidewalk system in a, in a neighborhood. So, we have included that in the, in the infrastructure standards, that developer would have to provide a sidewalk bond to complete missing sections of sidewalk after a two-year period. We did meet with local engineers and contractors and developers. We talked about it with them on and off for quite some time. We did have a couple of meetings. The two issues that our development community felt we were being overly onerous is, one was asphalt thickness, and the other was the use of what's called a GeoGrid in the, in the roadway cross-section with the gravel. I'll talk about those briefly. We are recommending that the city would go with residential street asphalt, with eight inches of asphalt, collector streets of 10, and archerial streets of 12. And it's interesting to note that as recently as the 70s and 80s, oftentimes, we were seeing pavement as thin as two inches, and some developments are two and a half, and others with minimal gravel. And we have been gradually increasing that to the point where we've, I think, a lot of the development we've seen in the, in the, kind of the night, late 90s, was like four and a half inches of asphalt on compacted gravel. And certainly, recent developments, such as West Glen 1 and 2, were constructed with four inches of asphalt, but they also had the GeoGrid we'll talk about. On our city-funded projects, Ottawa Street and Tottaw Street, they were eight inches of asphalt. The business park is 12 inches of asphalt, and I believe Thornton Street is 10 inches of asphalt. We wanted streets that were going to stand the test for a long period of time. So, the developers thought that those, those numbers were thicker than they needed to be. We do recognize our concern, and it is within, within the, the manual, that if you have a better idea and have a geotechnical report that supports a reduced thickness or a different way to build the street, we will consider that. If it, if we end up in the same place, we are willing to look at that. But this also keeps the smaller developers that don't have the resources for engineers in a position that they say, if I can, if it's not crazy out there, I can build this with eight inches of asphalt, I don't have to spend, you know, $15,000 on an engineer to, to argue about it. So, that's, that's one point that we differ from our, our friends in the development community. The other is what is called a GeoGrid. We put some pictures in the policy report. It looks like plastic squares, kind of the, the six-pack bottle holders on steroids, and that is used to create, improve soil conditions, so you can run your equipment over the, over poor soils while you build the roadway. We have used both the triaxial, which is essentially a square with the, with the diagonal in it, so it's essentially triangular shape grid opening, and the biaxial, which is a square-shaped opening. We've used both of those on the, on projects. They work well. The, the real difference is that the gravel that you use to build the base of the roadway tends to migrate a lot easier through the biaxial grids than the triaxial grids. And, once again, you can end up in the same place with the biaxial grid, you just have to have a commitment from your contractor or developer that if there are failures, or you see where the, the gravel has migrated, that they're not going to squawk too much by going back and removing the failed section and putting it back properly with the biaxial grid. Our projects where we have used the triaxial grid, we have not had that problem, or it's been a much smaller area of, of failure. Once again, we've provided an opportunity for developers to say that, you know, they want, they want to pursue what's admittedly a less expensive option, and willing, if they're willing to go that route, we, we support that. Mike Cooper put a lot of work into kind of figuring out what other communities are doing, and he's created that, that table of, of information elsewhere in the policy report. Basically, the eight inches of asphalt for residential streets is fairly typical. The proposed 83 gravel is, is fairly typical with other communities. And the soil subgrade is fairly typical for communities as well. I think the difference is the addition of the, the GeoGrid into the mix. We would be one of, I think, just a handful of communities that require that. I think they all allow it, but I think we would be one of... I think they all allow it, but I think we would be one of, uh, one, uh, one of a fewer, fewer number that actually requires it. Uh, ultimately, we believe that, uh, you know, starting with the high standards, that we will, uh, have a better infrastructure for our community. Uh, it improves, it streamlines the decision-making process for, uh, people that choose to develop in our community and that provides, uh, reduced maintenance costs and that provides flexibility. I'll let Mike Hooper, if he would like to comment on the, uh, the work he did with the pavement thicknesses and GeoGrid. Uh, it was an interesting exercise trying to put it all in a table. You wouldn't think it, it is, uh, it should be, but it is, uh, kind of thankless. So, Mike, you wanna say a few things?
Uh, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Uh, thanks, Mr. McDonald, for that excellent explanation. Uh, it was quite interesting going through the process of putting together that, that listing of the other cities and what they do for streets. Uh, I was a bit surprised to see that it was as consistent as it was. Uh, one thing interesting, I noted, looking back to the city projects, they're back into 2011. We were using basically the pavement thickness that we're proposing on city projects where we did major reconstruction of roadways. Uh, it was either the pavement thickness, uh, on gravel and compacted subgrade. Uh, most of them, we actually used the triaxial GeoGrid on it. We've seen really good response, our results from, from that practice. Uh, so we like the use of it, uh, that's why we're recommending it. And I'm available for any questions that any of you may have regarding any information in there.
Any, any questions or comments from, uh, Commissioners?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Hooper, I'm, I'm looking at the pictures, uh, you have the GeoGrid. Are those local, from local projects? Are they in Leavenworth or are they from just off a website?
Yes, those are all local projects. Uh, I believe a couple of them are from Thornton Street, uh, a couple of them are from the Business Park.
Yeah, I recognize the Business.
I think the middle two are from the internet.
Okay. I recognize the Business Park. What about the dump truck, uh, looks like to the right, a guy standing there, looks like he's a milkman with a, his hat on or something down there. One, the bottom picture.
Yeah, that, that one may be from the internet as well.
Okay, okay. I just couldn't recognize that. Okay, thank you.
One thing we did notice on the Choctaw Street reconstruction on one section of that, we had some subgrade that was so bad on that project that you could park an empty truck, uh, tandem axle dump truck on it. And just while it was sitting there, it would start sinking and sink up to the axle on it. We installed that triaxial GeoGrid on that project, put some gravel on it. And it was, that bad subgrade was able to hold that truck, not only empty, but it full with eighteen to twenty tons of, of other material on it. Uh, so that's one of the, the projects that really made us think hard about using this in our projects. We'd have a lot of bad soil in this area that creates issues with our subgrade.
Good, interesting. Thank you. Yeah. Any other comments or questions for Mr. Hooper or Mr. McDonald? Uh, Commissioner Bowder?
I have something.
Yes?
I just, okay, the, the thickness that you proposed here, the ex- extra thickness, um, I can't see it, or maybe I'm missing it. Um, the cost effective, obviously, okay, is this, these are the standards, but is this what we've been doing? Is this more than what we've been doing? If so, what is the difference in the cost and the cost effectiveness of it? Am I missing something here?
If the increase cost, if it's an increased cost over what the developers have been doing, uh, as far as, uh, roadway costs, the only additional cost is the triax that we've been, been putting in our, our roadways?
Well, it makes a lot of sense, you know, with the way, the ma- the amount of clay we have in our ground and freezing and thawing and stuff, that you're gonna make it more stable, but I just was curious as to, as to the cost effectiveness of it. It looks good to me and, and thank you for getting the comparisons from the other cities. That, that's a lot, too.
Mr. McDonald, could you also comment on cost effectiveness? It would seem to me that, I mean, upfront for some of these projects, we might be paying a little bit more, but in the long term, we have less maintenance costs and so that's where the, I would think the cost effectiveness would, would, would factor in, but, uh, what do you think?
The cost effect, the cost effectiveness for the community is in the long term. Uh, when we first got into large-scale mill and overlay projects, uh, kind of out in the, uh, southern half of the city, uh, we were doing almost exclusively what we would call edge mill, where we would mill like one inch at the gutters, uh, section and then lay down two inches of asphalt. And, and we would end up having to mount it up in the middle of the, uh, middle of the street because, uh, it had sunk over, all the traffic over there because it was typically two or two and a half inches of, of asphalt, uh, on the, uh, maybe six inches of gravel. It just didn't hold up and the street didn't have a crown. So, uh, we don't do nearly so much edge mill anymore. It was a very effective way to get a lot of street paved, but, uh, it, uh, we've kind of caught most of that up, uh, with adding essentially two inches to most of the streets at one point over the last twenty years.
Yeah.
So, uh, that, it's, it's a long, it's a long game.
Sure. Any other questions or comments for Mr. McDonald or Mr. Hooper?
I just have one comment. Uh, Commissioner Bowder brings up a good point and I just want to expand just briefly on what the developers take into consideration. It's not necessarily the cost of the asphalt, it's, it's a per-lot cost of the development. And you're right, if you make the asphalt a bigger piece, uh, a, a bigger expense than the total, uh, costs to prepare each lot, that includes the sewer buy-in fee and the sewer connections, the water line, uh, permit fees, site grading, it all gets rolled into a ball and divided over the number of lots and it's per-lot cost to, to get the site ready to build. So what I've told developers is that they would like to cut costs on the asphalt and, and that hurts the city in the long run. So let's not do that on the asphalt or the sidewalks, but then we'll work with you to reduce some of the other costs, um, to a level that essentially potentially makes them break even. So let's invest more on the asphalt and let's see if we can do something through the sidewalk cost share program or through a reduction of inspection fees or for some type of, um, reduction or some sort of infrastructure that the city can, can build, uh, for the project. So, um, you are right, i- it is the cost, it is gonna increase on paper the cost per, per lot, but the city's goal would be, um, okay, you're giving us something with these higher structures, standards, so let's work together to make this development happen and keep your costs down.
And the roads are gonna last longer.
The roads will last much longer.
I mean, they're gonna last a lot longer and, and that's really important to have a better product, um, certainly for the citizens and, you know, for the city. But, uh, no, it's a good explanation. I think that's a, a great strategy. Um, and I think the, the document, the, the plan itself is really good, um, just comprehensive and it's easy to read. So, thank you, Mr. McDonald and Mr. Hooper. Um, and I guess this is, will this come back to us for some type of an approval or at a?
Yeah, we will ask the commission to adopt it, much like you adopt development regulations. So it will be the official commission-approved infrastructure manual for the city.
It's a sweet-looking document, really. I mean, I, it's, it's, it's good and, uh, you're right on the money, I think, and, uh, we're investing a lot in roads and we need to get the most out of those investments we're making. Any other que- questions or comments for Mr. McDonald or Mr. Hooper?
Yeah, Commissioner Leonhard?
Go ahead.
A quick question. Um, on the, uh, proposed eight inches of asphalt in residential area, is that made up of the six-inch asphalt base course and the two-inch asphalt, uh, surface course? Is that what makes that?
Yes, and the six-inch, uh, base course may be two, three-inch base courses and then a two-inch surface course, depending on how, uh, the contractor wants to put it down.
Good.
Thank you.
It's the combined, combined thickness of all of the asphalt layers.
Okay, thank you.
Great question. And it doesn't just include the roads, obviously the plan includes the sidewalks, there's, uh, comments on stormwater, right, curbing construction, uh, the, uh, sanitary sewer, so very comprehensive. And, uh, excavations, private property in the right of way, so, good work. Uh, any other comments or questions for Mr. McDonald or Mr. Hooper at this point? Thank you. Good work, Mr. McDonald and Mr. Hooper. That's good. We look forward to, uh, looking at it again. I don't know what it'll be next week or three weeks or, but thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So that completes the fifth topic and last topic for our study session. So we're gonna go around the horn like we normally do and I'm gonna first go to our city manager, Mr. Kramer.
Uh, Mayor, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, just one quick update again. Uh, October twenty-fourth, this Saturday, from five to seven at Sportsfield will be the city's trunk-or-treat event. Um, it looks like it's gonna be dry, maybe a little bit chilly, but a fun night. Uh, we have great participation from a number of volunteer groups and so city staff is excited for this Saturday from five to seven at Sportsfield for the trunk-or-treat event. That's all I have.
I think we're expecting a lot of, a lot of parents with their children to come through, right?
Yep, I believe so.
As far as what I hear, so that's good. Um, thank you, Mr. Kramer. Uh, Commissioner Wilson?
Yes, I would like to bring some good news to the commission. Uh, there have been several citizens who have been very impressed, uh, with the road development that's been taking place, the construction. Uh, they said they haven't felt this happy in over ten years when it comes to the road improvement.
Go ahead, great.
So, uh, great news to the commission. Like I said, hey, to the city staff as well, everyone who played a significant role.
Great.
Significant role.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. Appreciate that. Anything else?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Commissioner Leonhard?
And don't forget to vote.
Yep, absolutely. Uh, Commissioner Leonhard?
No, nothing at this time.
Okay. Commissioner Preisinger?
Uh, I, I'd ask, uh, Mr. Jack what the unemployment rate was in Leavenworth. Uh, in August, it was seven point nine percent and he had the, the figures for what the county dropped from whatever it was to five point seven in September. Uh, I just got a note from Mr. Jack and he said, uh, let me find it here. The unemployment rate in August for the city was seven point nine percent and in September it has dropped to six point zero percent. So one point nine percent drop. So it is trending in the right way. Uh, and it obviously is not down to three point four, three point six, but it was last year, but we have moved positively. Uh, I'll say it, I think, I'm pretty sure Commissioner Bowder will probably take it from here, but, uh, I just want to reinforce masks and social distancing and, uh, I'll let Commissioner Bowder take it from here. I've got a feeling she wants to do it.
Okay. Commissioner Bowder, you're up.
No, I don't have anything more. I, I.
Okay.
Please, please wear your mask. It's nice.
Well, I'll say something.
We like to go out to eat. We hate to see businesses close down and we want to support our businesses. We like to go out to eat. We go out to eat where they're, where the servers are wearing their mask and if they're not, we don't come back. But that's just, that's just me.
Right.
And so I want to be safe and I want my family to be safe and I want the community to be safe. So please wear your mask. Thank you.
Commissioner Preisinger?
And, you know, watching all the news, the, the numbers are increasing, especially increasing here in the Midwest. Uh, the predictions are for the next, as we go into the winter season, it can get worse. Uh, this thing can be mitigated, uh, until a good vaccine, uh, comes on board, but do what you can. You owe it to yourselves, you owe it to your citizens, uh, to your fellow citizens, you owe it to your family. Please take precautions. Once again, it is not a hoax. Let's, let's try to keep this controlled so we don't lose businesses and lose lives. Thank you.
Yes, and I echo, uh, Commissioner Preisinger's comments about COVID-19 and the health, the public, uh, health, uh, steps, tools that we have in the public, uh, health toolbox and thank you for, uh, just bringing that up, uh, to our citizens. It's critically important. I just have two quick things and, um, every month, or every month or two months, we get a Kansas Government Journal. It's a magazine like this, it's, it's put out by the League of Kansas Municipalities. There's always some very interesting and informative articles in there, but there was one that was written by, uh, our, uh, PIO, our Strategic Communications Staff Officer, Melissa Boward. New DIS golf course offers activity during the pandemic and of course, that's the, uh, that DIS golf course that's out at Ray Miller Park. And, uh, so I, I don't know. I mean, it's, it's, it's interesting. It was a good job that Melissa wrote that article and, um, that was something that was done by Steve Grant and Leavenworth Parks and Recreation Department back in March and April. And, uh, maybe it's a nicks, nicks, niche sport, but, uh, certainly an added amenity and, uh, where families can go out and have fun. So just, uh, kudos to the Leavenworth Parks and Recreation Director and his department and also for Melissa for writing a very good article, uh, Mr. Kramer. And then, um, I think we, uh, in terms of the comprehensive plan for 2030, there's an email that went out from, uh, Shockey Consulting in terms of launching the engagement platform for Leavenworth 2030. It looks like it's gonna, I haven't gone to the site, I just saw the email today, but I'd encourage our citizens to, uh, go to that Leavenworth 2030 where the engagement platform is and get your, um, provide your feedback for this comprehensive plan for 2030. Seems like a very, very good plan and a good way to get maximum participation from our, from our citizens. And I guess groups can get together too and like download like conversation packages and things like that. So I'm very, uh, pleased about that and excited that, uh, we're gonna get the feedback from stakeholders and citizens within the, uh, within the city. Um, so those are my two things and if there's nothing else from Commissioners, we will, uh, stand adjourned. The city, the study session is finished.